Okay, we're gonna call the panel select board meeting to order at 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 6th, 2014. Agenda approval, approved in the minutes of 10:30, 14. Warrants, mail. Our road foreman's monthly board meeting, talk about contract plowing and other issues. Under the old business, we have David Spur, Blaze Design, to talk about town easement. Then we're gonna do the taxes due, we're gonna do a statement on that, just so everybody knows when people will be here and when they can be collected. New business, legal zoning land issue question, and then we've got SBW Events Group to do with permitting and gate closure at the Southern Vermont Energy Park, then we have a personnel issue.
Make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Okay. I, as well as personnel, I'd like to add another one, and it's to do with, it's to do with a right-of-way issue, and it could be legal, so I'm gonna put that down as legal as well, just so you know. But it's a right-of-way issue that people are trying to deal with, a town that called me up and I wanted to bring you guys up to speed, but it could be some contractual issues there that we should talk about, okay? Have a seat. Okay, let's do minutes. Did I get them to say aye to that? All those in favor say aye. Okay. Approval in the minutes of 10:30, 14.
One more. Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Payroll report ending 10/7/14 in the amount of $5,694.67. House payable invoices, ending 11/7/2014 in the amount of $47,727.82. $28,391.50, so that was for black topping. And that was the only big one. Much pleasure, guys.
Make a motion.
One of you is second and one moved? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nail. The town of Pownell will be holding a public hearing notice for E-911 road naming on Thursday, November 20th, 2014, at 6:30 PM. We'll have a chance to say more about that in a couple of minutes. Okay, we have a letter from a concerned citizen that lives on the crossroad who is talking about some dumping that is occurring out there and drinking activities. The constable has been made aware of this, and there was a few tires out there that one of the people will take care of that works for the town. But just so you know, we got a letter and it looks like it's gonna be taken care of. Okay, we have our delinquent tax report. The total amount due, including interest and penalties, is $170,396.69. And we have our delinquent sewer tax, which would, interest and penalties, comes to $36,537.76. We have a letter from the Federal Emergency Management Agency to do with the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, flood insurance rate maps. There were some that were sent to us, and this is giving people information on how they can appeal in the zones and the other issues with it, if they feel there is any, before they're finalized. I assume one of these is posted up?
I believe on the.
Okay. Yes, yes, so I would believe that's posted on our wall outside, if not, we'll have one back here. This came from a resident on, who owns a lane up on the end of Montgomery Road, who is looking for a letter from the selectmen agreeing with, I guess it's a policy that was made a while back, to do with where we plow their, their road, as well as the road that's in front of it. Currently, they had tore down a house, and they just wanna make sure if they rebuild the house that we continue to plow to where it wa, where this new house would be. There's none there now, but they would like something in writing, just for the record, so that they, when and if ever they build something, it won't be forgotten, because they came to an agreement saying, don't bother going up in there when we don't need to. So what's the board's pleasure?
So it's just for winter maintenance?
Well, we don't even grade up to there, because there's no activity there, and the agreement also was that if they was ever to rebuild that house, or one above there, that they would bring the road up to town specifications, to meet the same specifications as the rest of the road.
And I would recommend that we have our administrative assistant write a letter that basically says just that. Basically says, once a house is constructed and the road is brought up to meet the standards that the town has set, we will maintain it.
When did all that happen? How many years ago?
I plowed it when 16, 16 years ago, 15 years ago, probably even 14 years ago.
Yeah, we changed the road up there.
That's all right.
We just moved it around and did some things, and when we did that, there was nobody up there.
Well, they, when the listers got their new program in that, they went by the state's certificate of mileage on how much, how much mileage there was there, but they added 600 feet of road, so that takes 600 feet of road off the very end where they are. And so they wanted to make sure that town still has right-of-way up to that area, and if they ever get a chance to build up there, that they would, they would bring the road up to specifications and make it so that we could turn around and go through again.
Sounds like there's two things, then. One is that we should tell the Department of Transportation the actual distance of that road.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we'll never get our share of the pay for maintaining it when it does occur, and it'll be on the map, and with all the rules they did over roads here in the last few years, you wanna make sure you're on the Department of Transportation map, or otherwise, who knows what it'll be. So there's two things. One, we send them a letter, but we also send a letter to, how we make out the road distances and miles for the Department of Transportation, updating them on this.
I think you have to do that before you actually sign this certificate of mileage every year, because there's a sheet that comes with it that states, how many miles, blah, 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 yes.
We can find out if we can do that before.
I think it comes around February, so it's not.
Anyway, so it's, yeah, so it's a couple of months away anyways, but we just need to remember that, so it gets done. Otherwise, we won't be here, someone else could be.
How do we turn around now?
Turn around their driveway.
In these people's driveway that don't have a house at the end of somewhere. So basically, what we do is have a, they used to have a, what was it?
No, they used to go right to the top of the hill.
And you had a little round?
They'd pull ahead and then they'd go back and then come right back down, but instead, since there's nobody up there, and it's kind of a steep grade and, you know, it's narrow, so we were, we asked the, actually, it was Betty Pratt was the one that I asked to turn around there, and she said, not a problem.
There, so you turned around lower?
So we turned around right in her driveway, and of course, and when Bill Nielsen and Milk Pratt bought the, or acquired the house.
Yep.
They said, go ahead, continue to turn around there.
Yeah, it's just the way of us, if we, if we, here's where I'm at, if we told them.
Same thing as Bee Hill.
We're gonna do it, and we should have something in writing.
Well, we want to make sure that's what we said, or whatever we did. Whatever took place, we should follow that up, so we should find it.
Yeah, well, I think sending them a letter and recording it with our specifications is probably the best approach at this, versus them coming in and sending something to us that just says, what this letter basically said was, make sure you maintain that road up to our place. I think we need to say, bring it up to specs, and we'll maintain it, because otherwise, if you just.
Yeah, well, that's, like I said, that's the way it was explained to them, they didn't have any problem with it at all.
Yeah, years back?
No, just.
Recently.
Oh, just recently, oh, okay, okay, oh, all right, okay, good, good.
I guess, I don't know if he got a map or something of the property.
Okay, good, taken care of, good, got it.
Maybe he wants to build a camp or something up there, whatever he wants to do, and he noticed that the, the right-of-way, the lines that are on a tax map, it didn't go all the way to the top of the hill where it used to, so he had some questions.
Yeah, he's, he just wants to make sure he gets to his place.
Right.
Okay, got it. He just wants to keep that right-of-way is what he's after, all right, got it.
Yep, that and us maintaining it. Okay. Road foreman, you're talking, let's keep going.
Talking too much. First thing off, contract plow. We use one contract plower a year. This gentleman's been plowing for us longer than 16 years that I know of.
What's the rate change, any?
Hasn't changed, hasn't changed in four or five years, right?
2008.
2008.
Even with the fuel changes and stuff, he hasn't?
No, it was a lot higher last year, it was less this year.
Subtract. Fuel is less, you shouldn't have brought that up.
I shouldn't have.
Remember what he said, remember how many years ago he said?
You gotta subtract now, fuel is cheaper now than it's been for four, five years. Hell, you're darn right.
But he said he's been plowing for eight years, so it's back to where when we first hunted.
No, I said he's been plowing for 16 years.
16 years. Well, it's not back to 16 years ago.
I don't know what the, no, that, that contract right there is, like I say, it's the same rate it's been for.
A long time.
2008.
Yeah, so.
Good.
So the gas has got back to where it might have been in 2008.
But what, what in there is insurance? Where's this roof?
It's southern part of town.
Okay.
All them old, Bannister Hill, Bee Hill.
Okay, that's the same old roof.
Pretty much, yeah, same route he's always had.
Yep, okay.
Way he doesn't get lost.
It's been longer than 16 years, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
56 years.
I've been plowing for the town, this'll be the 17th winter for me, so he's been, he was here four hours.
He was in it before you were there.
Everybody, 20, 25.
I don't doubt it.
I'll bet you.
30.
So he goes out, when you guys go out, you all go out together?
Yeah.
You give him a buzz and?
Yeah, he does his thing.
So we have nine plows on the ground.
What's the boy, what's the boys' pleasure?
I'm older, bro.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. He's hired.
Black topping was complete on Burlington Road. Yeah, 188 ton, I'm thinking off the top of my head, 190 ton in that region. All the patches were dug out.
The homeowners who have been coming to this board for a few years, asking the question, actually saw me at the polls and were very pleased.
That's good.
The other thing is that happens, has to happen at some point, is all the black top, or the concrete is busted up south of Joel Burlington's Drive, that section through there, and as you start breaking down over there, there's four more culverts that have to be replaced, and some of that concrete is just.
Yeah, I should, I should be clear that they're very pleased with the work you've done, but they understand there's more.
Right, right, they understand there's more.
Yes.
It's the never-ending road.
Well, it's, at some point, at some point it'll be, it's just 10,000 feet long, you can't, you just can't afford to do it all in one, one whack, but the places that are stable.
But on the north, but on the north end, everybody can get out, and on the south end, everyone can pretty well get out without any real serious problems.
It's a huge improvement.
That's right, so, all I'm saying, it might not be the greatest road to pull, to go all the way through, it might be a little bumpy at some points of the year, but, but everyone that lives there is, is, should be satisfied.
Well, should be pleased with the ways, the progress that we're making.
That's right.
I'm just saying that the lower part is, needs a little bit more drastic reclamation to.
Well, that's something we could look at in our budget process there for, to do a little bit each year of, maybe if we can, if we can find that.
The other, since we're talking about future plans here, I know we talked about adding on to the salt shed. At some point, I'd like to try to do something with that next year, add about 30 feet onto the back of it. It's 22 feet wide, and it's 15 feet tall, so it's gonna take concrete work is what it's gonna take, and it's probably, I don't have the exact figures, but it's not gonna be really that expensive.
How long is it now?
It's 22 feet wide, 22 feet deep, and it's 16 feet high.
You wanna lengthen it by how much?
I wanna add 30 feet to the back of it.
30 feet?
And keep it 22 feet wide.
So as a matter of taking the rear wall down?
Taking the rear wall down. We have to dig all the way around it first so that the outside wall stand.
Right.
And before you take the wall out, you actually concrete, lay a floor.
Right.
Lay a wall up.
And knock it out.
And then just butt the two together, more concrete.
Okay.
Sounds good. So you're gonna work on getting some numbers?
Yeah, springtime comes around, we'll do that.
Okay.
The other thing is, is we got a couple sections of road.
How big do you say? 30 by 22.
Right now, it's 22 by 22.
Addition, yeah, addition, 30 by 22.
That's right.
Make it 30 feet deeper.
Yeah.
No, 30 feet deeper, right?
Right, deeper.
So 22 plus 30.
Plus 16.
No, height is 16.
16.
Yeah.
Plus 30.
Yeah, right.
The floor is 20 by 30.
Right, that's the floor plan.
In the back is another.
The size of the building.
20 by 16. And basically even one more.
The, there's a couple roads in town that, one's about 650 feet, that's South Man Hill, it's pretty broke up. Up on the upper side to the, it's all broken too there. Probably should be dug up and reclaimed it of some sort. We don't, we don't actually just build it up too much, if we get rid of the asphalt and some fabric down and made a base, and even if we built the road up six inches or whatever, it's not gonna alter anybody's driveways or anything, because the road pitch is pretty good shaped to one side. The other one is Snake Hill Road. As you come off, when they did the sewer project, they actually put some pavement up to Snake Hill. There's sewer manhole on one side, but it comes up nice and true, and then the road just drops right off, because it's just, it's either all clay, or I don't know what's underneath it, but the black top is all busted up. You go up and around the corner, the town must have been 20 years ago or 25 years ago, they riprap the bank, and all that, of course, had settled in, so my thought was to go in and take off the first four or five feet of riprap that's there, place that down one more lower tier, and then just add another tier of riprap, and then reclaimate that section.
That's dirt?
Pavement.
Okay, that's pavement.
If it was dirt, we wouldn't be talking. They'd do that with grader, and then they'd be done.
Well, I understood, I thought you were saying what you said when they paved for the sewer.
Snake Hill Road.
Right, when you did it, okay, I got you.
Yeah, they did the bank, the bank drops off there, so fierce.
Drops race.
Fierce, bad.
So those we're looking at for next year?
They're looking at it next year, right.
And those are the class three? You're gonna do any class two requests for greens?
We filed a grant for North Pownell Road to resurface that with two and a half inches of asphalt. I think to, can't remember what the measurement was, 2,700 feet is sticking in my head, but I'm not positive on that, and it was also gonna add in another 800 ton to do some shimmin'. Barber's Pond Road, or actually South Stream Road, because some of that asphalt is 22, 24 years old.
How's that stuff in front of church and stuff, is that breaking up pretty bad on that road, or gonna be able to lay over it?
Uh, North Pownell Road, it's, it's, we'll run it up, but they'll, they'll shim it and then they'll level it right up.
Yeah, it's not all gated, it's up ahead, it's gonna.
Well, it's, it's been crack sealed in one lane. The West Pownell Lane is, was crack sealed, and a portion of the East Pownell Lane, but that's one of the ones they're gonna crack seal.
Okay, get any crack seal this year out?
No.
All right.
Spring.
Yep.
Um, let's see, I think it was, uh.
Box culvert.
Yeah, we were, I got a quote on a box culvert on North Pownell, or Mount Anthony Road, and I mentioned it to you a while ago, but I was waiting on another one, and the guy just never showed up, I'm gonna make sure I call him back and get him over here, because the majority of the culverts that we, box culverts that we bought, came from concrete systems, and he hasn't been over yet, but I did meet with the stream alteration engineer, and he said it needs to be a certain style of box, certain size, there's ledge showing on both sides, so he's, has indicated to me that it needs to be all dug out, which would mean a lot of excavating.
Just one by chenille?
Chenilles, and the, what they do is they'll pour two-foot wide, two-foot deep footings, the length of the ledge, right to the ledge, and pin it to the ledge on both sides, it'll be 14 feet wide, 70 feet long, and at the same time that they pour the, the footings, they need to pour the footings for the wing walls. And it's probably in the vicinity of about 60 yards of concrete. But I haven't been able to get anybody to come over even to take a look at the excavation work, because it's, it was the middle of, well, it was the middle of summer when I got these quotes. But that's something we should be thinking about, because I've been filing for a structures grant for that project for four years now, so it should be coming up pretty quick, even though when we get the grant, it's good for two years, so. Other than that, a new truck showed up on October 30th, and it's over the highway department garage now, we're gonna get the radio installed in it, and I've got some, it's some undercoating that was sent to me as, in a trial basis from Texas Refineries, and I'm gonna spray underneath the channels of the cab and everywhere I can reach before I send it down as lags, which will be going on a 14th.
Happy with it?
Not good.
Good.
Better. It's got, well, I didn't go through the, the build sheet on it yet, but everything that I could see is there.
The other question I have for you is, the two fuel tanks at your garage, one is low sulfur and the other one is?
No, they're both the same.
Okay, I don't think we can run the off-road on, in that new truck.
It's not off-road, it's dyed fuel, but it's not off-road.
Okay, is it gonna meet the?
Low sulfur, um, I can get you the specifications on it.
Okay.
But they wouldn't be selling it to us if it wouldn't go through a DPF filter, because they've been using them since '07 now, so that's why they, they're getting rid of these sulfured fuels.
Okay, so what we're buying for fuel is what now?
It's a dyed, untaxed, low sulfur fuel.
Okay, so it is definitely.
On-road fuel.
It is definitely a low sulfur, okay.
On-road fuel.
Okay.
Any other?
Yeah. Um, just had about three projects you talked about. I would suggest that in the next two and a half months, you have some numbers put together or three months.
Yep.
Estimated numbers.
Well, usually we budget, we budget January, so.
About two months.
Two months, I guess it's two months, right?
Six, six to seven weeks.
That's why I'm bringing it up now, is just to give you familiar.
Yeah, maybe it's two months, yeah.
Because you have to plan on budgeting also.
That'll be six or seven weeks.
So I would, you should probably have them.
Well, I got, I got a good portion of the numbers now, but, like I said, the contractor, somebody to do all that excavating, I haven't got that numbers yet, I mean, I can guess what myself what it would cost, but that's not gonna get you.
Well. Well, it'll be, well, have a number.
I mean, that's a fairly large job, I mean.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
People have to realize too, that the road is probably gonna be closed for probably six to 10 days.
Means they'll have to go around, so.
And.
Come down skippery.
Yeah.
How does that affect the fire departments and stuff?
Well, fire department will be notified, and all the emergency services, of course, will be notified when, when it happens, and, you know, we'll have, I'm sure, just like the, the bridge in South Pownell, everybody will be notified years in advance, or a year in advance, as of this project, so that people can.
Really, there's, on Mount Anthony Road, you're only talking, there's not a lot of properties, I mean, there's gonna be eight.
Well, there's not so much a lot of property, if you had an emergency on the other side of that.
I understand that part of this.
You would have an extra four miles to go.
That's right.
To get to wherever you needed to go.
That's right, that's right.
And everybody, somebody.
Well, as long as you knew what that.
Right.
That can be planned, but I'm just saying, as far as an inconvenience goes.
You're right.
You're, you're, you're only affecting.
They would take, prior to that, and go up the old, like.
Cold storage.
Cold storage.
Cold storage, go that way.
And, and just, you know, feather some gravel on that, get all that nice and smooth, and so that it's easy access in and out of there, to save people going into banking a little bit more time, so.
Yeah.
But it'll all be posted, it'll all be warned.
It's progress, I mean.
Yeah.
If a guy washed out in a major storm, it'd be, even longer probably, because this way we'll know where the culvert's coming.
Sure, that's right.
So.
Very good.
That's good. Anything else, Casey? Any else, Henry?
Nope.
Ronnie, Rich?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you for coming.
Just before the fish pound, yeah.
Thanks, Casey.
Yep.
Moving right on, David Spur.
Keep pointing at your site here.
Huh?
Get him here, your site.
Yeah, let me get comfortable in my new chair. Should I, how do you sign up for this, how do you sign up for this position?
Put your name in.
A couple of things, this is a draft copy, but somewhat permanent, and likewise, a micro copy of the same thing. Since we last talked, I went out and did a field investigation and field location of the road, or what I felt to be the road, and I talked to Ms. Proudy, she wanted to be here tonight, but she's sick, so, but based off of what I could find, based off of what was told to me, based off of other evidence, the road looks like it comes down, and then jig-jugs down in here and stops about there, it actually doesn't make it to the end of the property, at least that's what I saw. There's some big ungraded boulders down there that probably would need to be addressed if you wanted to go quote any further. As it is, from about in here somewhere to the end, the, the, the road would have to be rebuilt anyway, all the way down. There's anywhere from four to six inch trees growing on, on the flat section, which I assumed to be the road bed. There's overgrowth and undergrowth and rocks that have fallen down over the bank, there's rocks that have fallen down from, pick a storm, there's banks that have been washed away, and, and. and uh, over time and such, so there's gonna have to be some, some serious, regardless of where it goes. From about here, the edge of the garage-ish area. Where I called existing garage to the end. That all has to be reclaimed and rebuilt and smoothed out and graded and, and whatever. Um. But the area that I highlighted in yellow, except for the bulge. Um, is thirty feet in width, and she's agreed to that. And said, okay, fine, if that's where the road was and, and that's what you've shown me and such. Then that's where it goes. You know, I'm not gonna move it. Coming down through here like we had discussed and coming over here like we discussed and all of that. She doesn't want anything to do with that, and besides, it would probably be even more work than, than coming this way. Um, and, and probably this section of the road needs to be reclaimed also. But not as, anywhere near as much as from in this space to the end. Um. That being said, she also said that she does not want at this time the dry hydrant on her property and thus the dry hydrant easement. So she'll discuss it with you maybe in a later date, but as of today. The answer is no.
Okay, so basically what I'm hearing is, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that she's saying basically leave, leave the access where the access was. So nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Okay.
But now it'll be the fungus there versus.
Well, I was having the impression that there were structures that have been built over the years on this.
There's a possibility. No one really knows if there was or wasn't, but if there was, the only one that might be is this one.
Yep.
And if there is, it may not, it may be in the easement, it may not be in the easement, it may be just barely in the easement by a foot or three, but not on the road itself. Um, it may have been on the road, but the town owned the easement at the time, because the tannery didn't own it anymore and it became the town property. And thus the town easement, and the town authorized the building of that building.
I don't know if the town owned, owned it at that time because of the legal issues that were going on, but but, but that, that could all be looked up. Here's, here's what I guess, I'll, I'll make a statement to the board. Basically, at this point, there's a non, non-defined easement that we have and right to go across the property. Do we wish to have it as a defined easement or leave it as it is?
I'm gonna leave it as it is.
In other words, it won't be defined. We just know we have an easement across the property.
There's a reason.
Yeah.
This is drawn in, it's scheduled in, and it's um, um, thirty feet wide.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and it's already, uh, maybe there's some erosion, et cetera, on the riverside. Your thirty feet can become less if this is pinned.
Well, it, that, that may be, but even such, it doesn't, it doesn't, you can't keep going this way with it.
Well.
Here's, here's where I'm.
But if it's on, if it's not designated as of now.
It just says you have an easement.
We have an easement to cross.
Right, but you can't, but you can't slide it over to fit, to fit your needs, because if the easement evaporates when the water comes in. If the easement's still there.
Right.
Just because the river took it away.
Somewhere.
Doesn't mean that the easement is gone. The easement's still there. When the water goes away, the easement comes back. Just like I, if I have riverfront, water, waterfront, riverfront, pond front, ocean front water, take Sandy for example. When I owned a piece of land in New Jersey and Sandy took my land and put it in the ocean, I didn't lose my land. The ocean took it. When the ocean recedes, I get it back. And that's the same thing with a property, that's the same thing with an easement. The easement isn't gone. I mean, why, why is the distance twenty-five feet, but the easement thirty? It could be, and I'm not saying that it is, and nor am I showing it as such. It could be the back edge of this property line, which is the tannery property, which is now the town of Pownell property, is also parallel with the thirty-foot easement. In my mind, that's probably correct, which puts five feet of it into the water right now. Okay? My recommendation is to pin it, but it's not gonna move it. I mean, it's, it's, when, where, it's gonna be where it is, because if, if it's there. Then when the water comes to here and takes that much of it away, it doesn't remove it. It's just underwater right now.
Here's, here's.
And now what you have to do is.
You have to travel it with a boat.
You have to negotiate what you're gonna do temporarily until you put, put the land back to build it back.
That's why I say, I, I tend to agree with you. Leave it as it is, because it isn't gonna be used that often, and when it is used, we're gonna talk to the landowner anyways. We're gonna say we come down on our easement and we're gonna work out a way to go, go down our easement and get there. And it could change, as you say, over time, but we're not looking, we're not putting in a permanent road that it will always be there and the public goes up and down it all the time. That's not what we have. We have a. We have an easement, right? We have an easement that will, we're not gonna put in a, a public road that's used daily.
No, 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 you, you, I understand what that is. That's so that you can get from this point to this point.
And work on a dam.
And work on a dam.
That's.
Whenever that day may come.
Yeah, and, and it, and I, and if it's in the deed to do that. And it's not, not pinned at this time, and if nothing's changed, then why would we pin it?
Well, yeah, well, that, that was, that was my, you, you know, I mean, I know it was a spare of a moment thought, but that's why I did that.
Well, you own enough land, you know what easements are, easements are.
Well, they, a lot of things can change, what you think and what is, but you know, you have, everybody has to make up their own.
Uh, what do you think, Ryan? What's your?
Well, I don't know if anybody's drove over it since nineteen sixty, so.
Probably not, because the trees are four to six inches or, or, or.
Yeah, but I mean, four, six inch tree's nothing. Equipment today, you, you know that.
Oh, I, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
If we need to go there.
It hasn't.
What I'm saying is, you know, if I didn't interrupt you, I wish you wouldn't interrupt me.
Sorry.
All I'm saying is, probably we wouldn't use this to town when there's high water anyway, so we'd probably be going partly in the riverbed to go up there. It's not a big deal, as far as I'm concerned. So I can't see where, where the, all it is, is getting access on this property without making sharp corners. So if you come in here with a crane, that's probably what we'd use. Or, you know, concrete trucks or something like that, well, that was, be what would happen. But it would be probably, nothing's been done since sixty on that going across there, so.
Right.
I mean, probably as long as that dam is good and solid and stays there, we probably won't do nothing. We'll work on it from the other side, if it's just fleshboards or something like that.
Okay, yeah, so. Rich?
Nah, I'm, I have nothing to say on it. I'm in agreement with you.
I agree.
So, so I guess, uh, if you're looking from an official point of view from the board, I would, uh, take a motion to leave it as it is. Not pinned out.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So basically.
Can I have my drawing back and then I will mile hour it and?
Yeah, they should just take off whatever's, there's no pinned easement on it, so. Basically, whatever the deed is, we'll have to go battle that feud when we use it.
I was trying to resolve it, but, but we got at least down on paper better than it was.
Well. I guess the question is, is you've sketched something on a, a plan that you want to record with the town. And at this point, is the board agreeing with what you have on your survey? Or are we saying leave it alone and just go by whatever the deed is? I think the motion was to leave it. So it is. We're not looking for a recorded, uh, easement on a plot plan. Okay? Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next one. Taxes due. Rich, you gotta.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind all the Pownell taxpayers out there that, uh, your property taxes are due on Monday, eleven-ten. The treasurer will be in office on Friday, hours nine to four. Saturday, hours nine to one. And Monday, nine to five. Uh, this information is, except for the operating hours, is also on your tax bill. Consult your tax bill and, um, get your property taxes paid on time.
Thanks, Rich. Okay. We've been requested by members of the DRB to ask a question of our attorney to do with a legal zone, zoning issue. Everybody should have had a copy of it in their thing. Basically, what it, what it's is, is that, uh, the question that's come up is whether or not the person owns the property that goes under the road, or if the road is a natural subdivision and the person doesn't own under. So when a decision is made by the DRB for a subdivision, whether the road, the land underneath the road counts or doesn't count. That's pretty much what it is. Uh.
Is it a town road?
It's a town road, but, uh, lots of town roads are easements.
Both, all of them.
They don't, we don't own the road, it's an easement.
To cross.
Right to cross. Been set up that way. Now, a lot of the newer developments actually have roads that are laid out and separate from the property. The deed doesn't go to the middle of the road, the deed goes to the edge of the road. In this case, this is old enough structure.
Edge of the right of way.
Edge of the right of way.
Yeah, not the edge of the road, edge of the right of way.
Right of way, yeah, because it could be wider than the road.
Right, right.
So basically, uh, that's the question that's being asked. So if they can, uh, determine on this person. Now, uh, because it was sent by email, I did send it on to Peter. But I told him that I'd ask the board before he works on it, so what's your pleasure? I would think it wouldn't take a whole lot of time. He might have to do some research to see if this type of case has been elsewhere in the state. Yeah, well, and the other thing is to ask our BLCT. Which, usually BLCT gives an opinion. I have no trouble in asking them both. Have one do the research and why the other one gives an opinion. Because if you can get two lawyers to agree, we're in.
Much better shape.
Much better shape than usual with most lawyers, two in a room.
I'm just gonna tell you to go back to your town attorney.
I think so, but ask them anyway. A lot with the zoning, I know, that's, because that's what they've done with, uh, me when I used to ask them questions.
Well, I think it'd be interesting just to, maybe, maybe to find out a socket of cost or something, and it gives us a little, uh,
I think you should.
Something to think about with the next month there on our other decisions we have to make with insurance.
Yeah, we should, we should ask, that's for sure.
Well, uh, and then our, uh, then our, if we do get an opinion, at least then our, uh, you know, uh, our attorney can either advise us to agree or disagree.
You got, well, yeah.
And the, well.
Now, I have no trouble, I, and I, I like the fact that, I think you're right, you know, that they came and told us that they do this, so let's ask. That doesn't hurt anything, but I guess the question is, at the same time, do you want Peter to take a look at this?
Well, I thought the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, they had lawyers.
And the other thing is, they may be familiar with it, they may be able to, to reference it to a certain statute. And it could be a real simple answer. If it isn't, then I would say we'd.
Then we have to.
Then we'd talk to Peter.
That's right. Then make the next step.
Here, here's what I would, uh, ask the board to do is, uh, a motion. To make a motion that Linda contacts the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Town and finds out whether they will address it or not, and if they don't, uh, send it to Peter. Is that a reason?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We do contact Peter and tell him to hold up on that until you find out the answer, Linda, tomorrow? I know he's working on something different, so he's not really up. Okay. We have SBW events. Come on up. Thanks.
Good evening, and, uh.
Let me give a little bit of a background on what you've asked of me as the zoning administrator. You had asked me to look at, uh, whether you needed an application or not. And my question to you was whether you were gonna build a structure, whether you were altering anything on the property.
Right.
Or whether you were just holding events. And, uh, your response to me, and I'll let you talk from there.
Okay, thank you, Nelson. Um, just like to say again that my name is Scott Wyker. And, uh, I have not had a chance to speak before you previously. Steven Soller has. Uh, I'm associated with the property, the Green Mountain Race Track, as the venue manager and the event manager of the property. So my responsibilities at the property are overseeing the venue and overseeing events that would occur on the property. I think it's important to have that understanding of my role in all of this as, as we move forward. So, uh, as you know, the owners, uh, wanna breathe new life into the track via events. And so I, I feel in the, in the vein of transparency, that when event possibilities come up, of which two have. I'd like to come before the board and bring the board up to date on what those may be. Because as leaders of the town, you're looked at as those whom have the answers, or people, residents will come to you to, to ask for information. And I don't want any surprises here, so as events come up, which I will speak about in just a second. Um, I'd like to, with your permission, come before the board and say, these are what we're, we're thinking about. This is what's happening. And then I can get your feedback, um, on where to go from there. So the first event that, uh, has been bought before us is making the track a snowmobile practice track. As well as the possibility of snowmobile exhibitions on the track. This would be managed by East Coast Snowcross. Kurt Gagne and Sean Achilles, uh, whom have years of experience in snowmobiling. Uh, from our perspective, we think this could be a good use of the track in the winter months. Um, the East Coast Snowcross folks, uh, all insurance, all hold harmlessness, all of the paperwork would be set into place. Uh, because obviously our job is also to protect the owners and protect the general public, uh, in both cases. Uh, and so we're in preliminary discussions with Kurt and Sean on a snowmobile practice track and snowmobile exhibitions. But before we go any further with them and spend a lot of time and effort. Uh, I had said to Kurt, and actually Jody was with me as well. Uh, let's go before the Board of Selectmen to, to get your feeling, whether this would be something that you would buy into and endorse, uh, as a part of our event schedule at the track. So that is why I'm, that's one reason, and I'll get to the second event in a second. Well, I'll, I'll get to that, but I wanted, that's the first event for this winter. Again, I don't know details, I don't have dates, I don't have that info, because I didn't want to waste anybody's time if I don't have your support. Plain and simple. The second event, which is completely separate from that, would be a vintage car oval days, for lack of a better term. And that's where vintage cars would go around the track. This would not be a standalone, this is not racing, because we're not doing racing events at the track. That's a whole other game which we're not into. It's, in terms of snowmobiling, that's exhibition, and in terms of vintage cars going around that track, that would be exhibition. That is not a standalone event, though, and we would have to couple that event with, maybe it's a car show, maybe it's something else, because alone, it would not draw, uh, people. Um, but in each case, we believe that such events bring back, uh, excitement and enthusiasm and attendees and and would be a positive economic, uh, benefit for the town of Pownell. and would be a positive economic benefit for the town of Pownell. I don't have details again on that, I just wanna be upfront. The individual asked me to, you know, let's make sure we have board endorsement before going any further, so that's why, from an event side, those are the two events that are on the docket right now, which I'd just like to get your feedback on. And Nelson, I don't believe that form would be necessary, because we were doing no structures, and in either case. But I may be wrong, Nelson, and you'd have to educate me on that, because I did complete the form, but-
Yeah, when I looked at the form and looked at the bylaw, the bylaw basically is for people who are building things, or if you were totally changing the use of the building, if the building had never been used for events or anything else, I would create, I'd say that's a change of use and require a conditional use. And that's the sort of thing that I'm trying to work through as I look at these bylaws to see where you would fit in. Because there's been so many events that have been held there in the past, and there's never been a town permit-
Right.
Issue, there have been issues where we worked with the Selectmen, the Selectmen have gone down to try to review what was going on and talked with the state, because we do have the ability to talk to the state when they issued their permit. So that's the sort of way we've held events and dealt with them through the past, not through the zoning process of the Development Review Board and stuff, simply because there is no, there's no business or structure change.
So, you know, to me, it's a new dawning, a new day, and it's, it's working together, and, and to me, this is the first step appearing before you this evening to solicit your feedback.
Okay, Scott, I have just a couple of questions, some of which you may be able to answer, some you may not. I don't own a snowmobile, I'm not really well-versed in snowmobiles. What is a practice track and what does it consist of? Is this something that Skidoo and Articat are gonna bring down their latest models and people are gonna be able to try out on a limited, no, what, what is this?
This would be a track, and they'd set up some berms and other things that the snowmobiles would go over, similar to a motocross track for motorcycle. This is, this is really for profession, people have to sign up through East Coast Snowcross, where it's not gonna let anybody drive their snowmobile in and not have the proper insurances and paperwork in place before they're allowed on that property.
So where does this word "practice" come in?
Tony, wanna, you know, how-
Well, what, the East Coast guys are looking for a facility close to, they're based out of Clarksburg now. So they got in touch with Scott and myself and looking for a place to practice, but also, maybe next year, pull an event there.
Okay, so this snowmobile practice track is not a event?
It's not an event.
In other words, the public will not be charged admission to get in there and, and vendors and all this, this is something-
Not right now, no. And again, we're still trying to explore, and we have to grasp it too. But not right now, this is for these riders who are on a circuit. Here's a stopping point for them to practice before they go on to Scotticoke or wherever the, the place may be that they go. Because there's not a lot of opportunity for a practice track. And East Coast Snowcross would put the track together under their specifications, because that's their expertise. And they have the paperwork and the other parts to go with it, to make sure that it's professionally run. That's not my expertise.
No, I, I, I-
So-
So I said some questions you may be able to answer, some you may not.
Exactly.
Go ahead.
If, if I could just continue on with this a little-
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're talking about snowmobile, this is not considered a racer, or is it?
It's, it's not side-by-side racing, it's not racing, it's not racing against a clock, it's simply practicing for these snowmobiles.
And this is not something that would be open to the public?
I think that's to be determined.
Okay.
Yes, but what we're trying to do is, is they're trying to do is see if it's gonna work first.
Okay, yeah.
And get, and if we do, I think we were thinking about an exhibition thing for the public to come see later in the year. Again, it's all weather-related, so-
No snow, no-
And the only, the only, it's towards the end of February is the only weekends that's available to do an exhibition. We've gotta kind of be weather-related. So, and snow.
Yeah.
If we can make snow there, it's still, it's all up in the air kinda, but before we started doing anything, Scott and I wanna come to the board.
I just wanted a foothold on what exactly this is, because I've never heard of a, anything, I'm not into that venue, so I don't know. And I'm sure a lot of people out there don't know either.
And to me, the next step is, if we get a preliminary go, it's when I have more detail, come back to the next Select Board meeting and say, gentlemen, this is how this is gonna work. So we can then take it to the next step. And that's what I think this is, gonna be a process between the Select Board and ourselves to work together towards things that we're both happy with.
Tony, you gotta start off small before, you gotta walk before you run.
Exactly.
Well, I've got a couple of things. I am sure that we're gonna hear about, this is just history, noise. And you know exactly what I'm talking about. Whether you had fireworks down there, or what you would have, there's always been feed into this board or the Select Board-
Yes.
About noise and, okay. So whether you'd be talking about cars or motorcycles or, or snowmobiles or four-wheelers or- that would come up, that, that's gonna be something that we have to probably consider. The other thing is, is we'll go back to those snowmobiles. I think, I think whatever we're talking about, any event, would be a plus for what we have now, nothing. Okay, am I saying that?
That's exactly correct.
Well, okay, so, I mean, I just wanna get on the right, you understand where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, I would like to know what the, what and how the town could benefit from whatever these events are. I mean, I don't know what they are neither, so I'm, you follow? I mean, I understand that there's gonna be people come, they're gonna try it out, and it, and you hope it's gonna grow into something. I mean, regardless, I understand that. So whatever that something may be. But I guess what I'm looking for is to have it. Will some, something be generated, whether it be for-
Whether we can-
The stores or vice.
Or hire some folks to help with parking?
Or hire some people to do something, or, I don't care what, no, I don't, you can just come up with something. To say it would, it would benefit, it'll give us a job, it'll give us some work, it'll-
We talked about, you know, the parking lot, the fire department's in charge of the parking lot, you know, donations for a dollar a car, there's, there's multiple things we've talked about. Basically, this isn't such an infancy, just a start of something that we're trying to-
Well, I, I don't, I'm not looking for the answer.
Yeah, we don't know the answers yet.
Okay, I'm not looking for that answer, I'm just trying to-
To specify what could be those benefits.
Have something to talk about, okay, and, and-
Benefits, I guess, Henry, like you said, are bringing more people to the town and more money to the town, to the stores, to the-
That's right.
Gas stations, to-
Right, whatever.
Deli, whatever I need.
Deli, to the fire department, to anything like that, we're looking just to create, and a winter use when it's pretty much quiet and dead.
Okay. But I, that's why I brought up the noise, because, but I do know that it'll be some-
Well, the lights are gonna be a question.
The lights are gone, so we don't have to worry about nighttime.
I don't know if you have this answer or not, the, what's the, the noise level that's usually put off of these machines?
We spoke of that with Kurt.
They're, they're under, I think, I'm, usually the old noise decimal number is eighty-six dB. And all, all of these snowmobiles do not exceed eighty-six dB, okay? So, and it's, and it's always gauged at a certain-
At the perimeter.
Perimeter.
Right.
So it's, you can argue that all day long.
Yeah, well, what I'm looking at is, our rules say seventy dB until ten o'clock at night, I think starting six in the morning or something, I'd have to look it up. But again, from what I'm hearing of this, this is gonna be daytime activities?
Daytime, yes.
And basically, your borders are quite a ways away from the track and the housing side of it. So what you're looking at is, is there's a seventy dB rule right now. And I would see and ask you guys to look into it to see what that means, for what type of equipment you're talking about running and so forth. I know that some of the motocross places where they run and stuff, they're, they're required to have a special type of muffler, so they can blow it to meet certain standards. So just if you can ask that of the club too, because the, the real thing is, is understanding what the rules are here and what we're looking for. So if somebody comes in and does say something about the noise, we can say it either meets our standards or doesn't meet our standards, and then we can deal with it.
I know, I know those questions are gonna pop up, that's, that's why I'm talking about.
And there has been a noise study that shows what noise is around the area and so forth before. And that's available for people, the real thing is, what does this create? And I think that is the big issue, a lot of people are concerned with what the noise is, they're not worried about, you know, the tra, so much the traffic, because these things usually don't bring thousands of people. They're gonna bring the few people that'll come and go, so.
And how many times are we talking about this, Scott, roughly a year, is this one?
For the practice?
Well, the practice, we're talking probably maybe twice throughout January and February, because their schedule is so tight.
Okay, yeah, I just want a rough number, that's all.
Yeah, and then, looking towards the event, maybe the end of February, you know, again, but it all comes down to, we can make snow, if we can get snow. So it's kind of, it is well, very weather-related, and also positive feedback from the town, you know, if it's not, positive feedback.
Ronnie, you have anything?
Yeah, they must have these events somewhere else around here, right, in northeast?
They had, they had one last year in North Adams.
Okay, that's what I mean, so, I mean, it isn't a-
No, Scotticoke Fairgrounds has one.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're around.
Okay, so that, that's letting the snow, um-
Snow, right, yeah, yeah, Jason.
So they've, they've been around, it's not that, they started right in Wilmington, actually, the whole organization did.
Okay, okay.
And Scott, if I can continue on here, talking about the vintage car exhibition, I'm, I'm sure that's not gonna be held in January or February.
Hold on a minute before you jump, did you have anything, the snowmobile, okay, go ahead.
Could you give us a little more detail on the vintage car exhibition?
I can't, to be honest with you.
Okay, in other words, what I guess what I'm going with here, are we talking muscle cars and hot rods, are we talking-
Old.
We're talking Packards?
Yeah, the older cars, not the muscle cars, that's not what this is about.
See, that's, I wanna draw that line somewhere.
It's a great distinction.
Yeah.
I think the biggest thing is, is we talk to these guys, what they like to do is that they like to bring their cars to the shows, but they like to drive them.
Sure.
And they're not looking for-
Show them off.
Yeah, show them off, but not, not-
Show them off.
For high speed, but they wanna be able to, they-
Do their twenty miles an hour.
Right, around the track, when he drives around, drive around the track.
Right.
Because these are expensive cars.
Right, absolutely. Most of them are trailered to the event, you know, similar to a Concorde, something like that.
But great questions, I jotted down the years of the cars that we're speaking about.
You know, and would this be a, again, we're not talking about a club here, we're talking about an exhibition for the public.
For the public, this would be an open event for the public, coupled with another event. What would be the other event?
Well, I don't know, but something similar like a car show.
Car show, swap meet.
Right, flea market.
Flea market.
Something that this could be a side part of the, the whole thing.
Okay, so it's sort of like the car show we had there for a few years.
And just, just, let's talk about the existing track itself, what is that now, dirt?
That's still sixteen inches of bluestone.
Okay.
Still that track, that oval is-
A half mile.
Right, you have that track that goes around that big pond, and then that, the longer track goes around the dry pond in the back of the property. Not in the back, next to the bigger pond.
Actually, that's newly built.
Remember they do, yeah, that's exactly.
So, but that sixteen inches of bluestone is still solid, even there's grass over it. And you, and you go on the property, I mean, all that blacktop is covered by grass now, but there's still blacktop under there, so the drainage on that property is remarkable, you know, it's, it's-
So with these two venues, I'm sure we'll, we'll see you again?
Yes, sir, you will.
When you have more information, et cetera.
Just wanna get, you know, are you okay with us taking the next step?
Personally, I am fine with it, I don't know if you wanna go around the table, personally, I am fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it, the only thing is, like I say, is to make sure you make out the state permits, certainly see that the town gets a copy of that state permit.
Of course.
And, and it's just so that we, we know what the rules that's been given to you as well as, and we can look at it, and there's something way out of whack, they usually, at that point, we get to respond anyways. And the more information we have and the more we can tell the people, I think the more comfortable they will be with these type of events. It's when they show up and nothing's been out there.
That's it, Nelson, we wanna be a front, the State Police does have the mass gathering, that commercial gathering form that we would need to complete, I guess we're two thousand folks and above. So we do wanna follow all the paperwork that's appropriate for the town.
Personally, I think it's great, I think it's, whatever we can make happen there. My, my concern, of course, is it's, it's old history concerns. They've always been, they always come up, okay, and we need to have some answers for that.
And the other issue is-
And Nelson covered that with the noise and so-
And the other issue really is that people ask a question about is the floodplain, but the Agency of Natural Resources will talk to you about that.
Right.
The number you can call, and I think as long as you're not putting permanent structures or doing things, they're probably fine with it.
And, and Henry, you know, to your point, we wanna be ahead of the curve with information.
Right, that's good.
So that's why I'm not here, I'm just here to at least let you know what's going on. And if you said, you know, I'm dead-set against it, then let's, then we need to talk about it, but I get the general sense that we're okay.
I think, I'm okay as long as something, some unknown isn't out there.
And I think it's a long fold, when Scott has the information. You have anything, Ron?
Well, I don't have any see anything happen there.
Okay, great.
Same thing.
All right, thank you on that point.
You got a full consensus.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just for the record, the, the full board supports efforts to have some sort of activity occur there. The key, the key that we've spoke about is the noise and any disruption that would be major to the-
Hours.
Yeah, daytime hours, right.
Right. I think those are all reasonable requests-
Thank you.
That I think you can handle with no problem.
Thank you. Which brings me to the venue hat that I wear. Over the past few months, a significant amount of progress has taken place down at the track insofar as clearing, growth that has overgrown that property for years and years. And thanks to Jody Tornabine, and, and I'm gonna say especially his dad, Joe, we've done significant clearing of just overgrowth, so you can see the property again. And it's starting to open up, because it once was completely flat and hard-tot back there. And so we're, we'd like to get back to a flat surface, a flat piece of property. And we've taken the initial steps to do so. Still much more work to be done, we will be doing a site plan of the property. So there are some buildings that are next to the solar panel field that I would propose to take out, because I think they're a hazard, and someone could get hurt if they go into those buildings, and just clear it. Of which obviously we'll come back and we'll go to the zoning board for any, any demolition permits. But we're starting to reclaim the land back. Which then brings me to security for the property. We've had a guy named John, who's lived on the, who lives on the property during the summer and spring, spring and summer months. He's a camper, and so when someone goes onto that property, John has been very good about confronting that individual and saying, I'm so sorry, but, you know, this is private property. He has, you know, been in situations where people have not taken that well, and have actually hit his truck, have hit him. And, you know, the guy's been a trooper to try to secure the property while he's been on site. John left for Florida, where he lives in the, in the winter, he left about a week ago. So we've been working on securing the property. You know, obviously, at the north gate is secured, that gate really doesn't open up there unless we, we want it to. Jody, with his tractor, has moved Jersey barriers into the place, into place on the south side of the building. When you come in the south entrance, you go almost all the way down to the corner of the building, there are Jersey barriers that are now there. On Saturday, a chain will go up between two of those Jersey barriers, leaving enough, I think it's fifteen feet of space between- On Saturday, a chain will go up between two of those Jersey barriers, leaving enough, I think it's fifteen feet of space between the two Jersey barriers. So that Jody has a key, you know, different people have keys to, to unlock it, which prevents people from just going on the property. And, you know, it's, it's kinda sad to say, I was there today and, and there was a nice couple that came down with their dogs, who'd come down and let the dogs run around and, and, you know, they're the honest people in this world and it's the honest people that get penalized by those that don't do the right thing. And, you know, there was a party on the property about a week or so ago where trash was, was left near the front of the building, the beer cans. And, you know, it's those people that, that really ruined it for the good people. So we are gonna secure the property at the south end of the property with the Jersey barriers and a chain. It leaves then one opening to get onto that property. And that opening is on the north side of the solar field. So you come in Lovett Cemetery Road, you drive down, passing the solar panel field on the right. Then there's a gate right at the edge of that where people come into that gate. That, that's the gate that allows them access to the cemetery.
Kind of right there over the track kitchen.
Yeah.
Right, exactly where.
Yeah.
And so we're very concerned right now from a security standpoint that for the fall and winter months with John not living on the property, that we have everything blocked, but this is just an open access way for someone on an ATV. It's one where you have them do the, the mowing and stuff, so it's.
I think that fence, that fence goes, the fence is still all up down there?
All the way, just a couple pieces.
Well, yeah.
Into the track kitchen parking lot area, right, yeah.
Okay, 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 so actually, okay, all except for closing the gates pretty well.
Yeah, and you can.
In the Jersey barriers that we put in, they were there, we moved, they're at the north side of the old dog kennel.
Yeah.
And ends right there, just before the grandstand.
Okay.
That's where, that's where that is.
Yeah, you'd know better how that described the.
I can, I recall.
Henry knows it, but she's been there many times.
I've been there, yeah.
So our concern is trespassers, that that's their access into the property with nobody living there anymore. And God forbid that somebody comes on that property, they come on, they don't go to the cemetery, they come onto our property, there's an accident, and the first thing that's gonna happen is they're gonna get a lawyer and they're gonna try to sue the property owner for saying, oh, well, even though it's my fault, I'm gonna, I'm gonna blame you because you own this property. And to me, part of my responsibility is protecting the owners of the property. And so what I'm proposing is closing the gate and locking the gate for the fall and the winter. And then when John returns in March, I think it's March he returns, I'm more than happy to open it up again for a public access way, because if John sees somebody, he'll stop them. But I'm concerned right now that it's just an open invitation for people to, to do whatever they want since there's, that's the only way into the property at this point. And we, we don't need any access to the water.
The only, um, the only thing I'd like to throw out there is, I know you said Jody has a key, et cetera. And again, I'm playing best case, worst case scenario. Worst case scenario, emergency vehicles have to get in there.
That's, that's a great question. It just came up this weekend, actually.
How, how are you mitigating that?
Well, after the accident last Saturday on Route seven, Keith came to Scott and, Keith Coon, came to Scott and said, look, if we could have had access to the north gate, I could have ruled a traffic around the north gate and south gate, that accident, every traffic would have flowed fine. So Scott said, absolutely. So what, what the Ponto Fire Department's gonna do, they're gonna have their own key, their own lock.
Okay.
So the EMS can get in through, go, go to the building, everything. So there will be an orange lock for the Ponto Fire Department. There were, you know, that, that, it'll be in the trucks or Keith Coon will have right there and it'll be easy access to get.
Right.
So, we fixed that kinda, and if, and if that accident occurs like that, we have to block the road, we can use the north gate and the south gate and work around.
Or if, even if something should happen on the premises in your building.
Right, right, it's easy, it's accessible.
That's all. I just wanna make sure that.
But you never know, somebody might still climb over that fence again.
Well, you know what, that's.
You're right.
But at least then it's locked, you can say.
Gate is better than an open gate.
Right. I, I think, I don't know if there are new trespassing signs that may be coming out soon or that they're out, but I think we need to apply for whatever the no trespassing, so we put up the proper signage with the proper signature. And I guess I'd see Karen about that.
Yeah, you'd be cool, yeah.
And I'll probably stop in to see her tomorrow about putting the proper signage up, saying no trespassing on, on this property. But I come before the board to ask for permission to close this gate for the fall and, and winter months. What's your pleasure?
As long as all the, as long, I don't have a problem with it. Everything is, everybody's covered, you know.
Basically, nobody's gonna be able to get to the cemetery.
Yeah, they can walk down the train tracks and actually come in that way.
Which is also no trespassing. Okay, but I, I don't know of many people that would visit that in.
If they do, they've got a way.
Yeah, okay, so I'll make the motion if unless.
Well, why don't you just add a little bit to it?
Okay.
If, and if at any time we need to go there, we wanna hold the rights to the access to get in there. I don't care.
By contacting the fire department, whoever.
You follow, so then it's.
Chief Coon could get you access.
Would it be, would you like a key? I mean, not you had, I'm saying, do we leave a key with the town? That's probably the best thing to do.
Yeah, that'd be fine too.
You can leave it with Linda and she'll have it here.
Very good.
That way if something happens with the cemetery or something.
I, I don't have any problem with it. Who has?
That way, I'll, I'll make the motion and as long as there is a key left in the town office to access that gate, I'll make a motion that the gate be locked during the fall and winter.
Thank you.
That gate is, uh, where the old track kitchen is? Is that the gate you're talking about?
I don't, see, I.
Ain't by the railroad.
No.
No, sir.
No, no.
Do you remember the, where the old guard check just before we went into the track kitchen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
You got a second?
Yeah, Henry's seconding it.
I did.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good, very good.
Well, thank you.
Well, I hope things work out for all of us.
Appreciate, appreciate your support, gentlemen.
Look forward to hearing back from you.
You will. You have anything else? The liquor permit, I went to see Karen on that. Yeah, we've been, we've been. I have to go to the state to do that. There's no form with the town. Because we usually approve that, right?
We approve it, but, but we don't issue it.
Control board first.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, there has been one issue there for many years, so. And I'll see you tomorrow, Linda. Are there any questions that I may be able to answer? I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you for coming. Very good. Been a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Good luck. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'll see you tomorrow. Thanks.
Very good.
See you guys.
Take care, Jody.
Jody, thank you. I got a key too if you need one.
We can find you.
Don't lose it.
Take care.
Hey.
Give that to them.
Going in for, uh, let's go in for the right of way issue first in the executive session. And then we'll come out of that and then go back in for the personnel.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll do anything with the right of way. You might wanna have me do something with it.
Make a motion, we go into executive session on the right of way issue.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let me know we're off the air and mics are off. Okay, I need a motion come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to have me continue discussing right of ways with the attorney.
I'd like to make that motion, you discuss the proposition with the attorneys, appropriate parties, et cetera.
Okay, give a second.
Second. Go ahead.
Any discussion other than that? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we're gonna go into executive session now for personnel. And basically, we will not be making a, a decision to, to deal with that personnel when we come out on the air because of legal issues and ramifications.
And just before we do that, I wanna just remind everybody again, your taxes are due on the tenth, okay? Friday, nine to four, Saturday, nine to one, Monday, nine to five. The treasurer will be in to collect your taxes. Thank you very much.
Get a motion to go in?
Uh, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and again, we won't be coming out to, on the air.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take a second.